Good afternoon. Thank you for joining us this afternoon. I'm Julie Broadway, President and CEO at the American Horse Council. We're based here in Washington DC. And Justine Dayton, the Executive Director from the Kansas Horse Council, is the Chair of the Coalition of State Horse Councils. And we are very excited to put on this Town Hall meeting. Our objective today is to reach out to states that are not part of the Coalition of State Horse Council and invite them to get engaged and involved with the Coalition and to be part of our greater larger community. So first of all, a couple of housekeeping items and then we'll get ourselves going. Congratulations. Today is National Nonprofit Day, so to all of you out there, Happy Nonprofit Day. We would ask that to minimize background noise, you put yourself on mute. We will also ask that you go to the chat and enter your name and the state you're from so that we can sort of get an idea of who all we have with us today. So be sure to do that for us. And then, we're going to sort of get started on our agenda here. Let's see if I can get my screen to go here. There we go. So here's sort of what we have lined up and we're going to do a little bit of back and forth and be sure to put questions in the chat as we go along and we will also circle back to those. So we're going to start off by talking about why every state needs state advocacy on behalf of the equine industry and why it's important that that kind of representation. Many people are often intimidated by the idea of forming a state horse council. So we are going to talk a little bit about the process to do that and we have some resources to help you with that. We also have some questions about how to sustain or grow a state horse council. So we're going to talk a little bit about 100 ways that we have to grow or sustain your state horse council. Next, we're going to talk with three states that have really successful councils. And so we're looking forward to hearing a few words from them. And maybe they'll inspire you and give you some ideas about some ways that you could go about establishing state horse council, finding a way to grow your members or your revenues to support your state horse council. So lots of stories to talk about there. We're going to talk a little about how you can leverage the Coalition of State Horse Councils. They have lots of resources available to assist you and also some things that we here at the American Horse Council can do to help you. And last but not least, we're also going to talk about some resources that are available to help you get started and resources that we have and benefits that as being a member of the Coalition of State Horse Council are offered to you as state horse councils. So some programs that we have here at the American Horse Council that are available to you which pass on discounts to your members. So lots of different ways that you can add value out there. So quickly, Justine, I'm going to just take a quick glance in the chat and see what we've got here. It looks like, of course, we've got some folks from Florida out there. I see some folks Hawaii. Oh, that's great. Hi, Brandy from Oregon. And Chris is with New Mexico. And Susan's from Massachusetts, Washington State, Wyoming, North Carolina. I see another Washington, Colorado, Florida. So I've got some great participation. So we're delighted to have you. So with that, let me sort of jump in here real quick and share some fun facts with you guys. If you don't know this, about every five years, the American Horse Council and the industry conduct a National Economic Impact Study. So I always like to share these statistics to help those that aren't familiar. $122 billion of total value added to the US economy each year. 1.74 million in total employment impact, 7.2 million horses. Now, the reason I begin with this slide is because the three states that have the largest population of horses, and you guys can cheer or applaud in the background, are California, Texas, and Florida. And believe it or not, California, Texas, and Florida don't have state horse councils. And so we'd really like to see those states develop a state horse council. So words of encouragement there. So I'm going to pause there for a minute from my slides. And let's talk a little bit about why every state needs state advocacy. And I see some of my experts out there like Lonnie Powell. Hi Lonnie. Who are great advocates in their state and they can help add to my story here. But state horse councils are the go-to resources and advocates for legislative and regulatory issues in a state and at a local level. So they're really key to making things happen in those specific geographic areas. And the reason that they exist is because they help educate decision makers on the impact that our industry has to the national and local economy. These folks may not be horse people that are serving in these legislative or regulatory roles. So they're not familiar with our industry and this is a great way to make sure they're well informed. They help fight for green space and public lands and equestrian-friendly zoning and land use. And I can honestly say, and Justine and others out there can probably attest, that right now, more than I ever recall in the past maybe 20 years, we are seeing more and more rezoning and land use challenges. And we've also seen some new regulatory things that have come out that are pushing a lot of equestrian facilities or equestrian communities to have trouble with waste management or water management, which may lead to some zoning and some land use challenges. So the other reason that we have state horse councils is to identify the monetary impacts that the industry has on a community. That could be through tourism or jobs, as I gave you before, that kind of thing. These help inform decisions regarding business development and construction and renovation for venues and trails and the viability of some of the events that are out there. We just completed a survey through our social media and clearly heard trails, trails, trails is what everybody wants to talk about right now. The pandemic really got people out into the parks and the Forest Service and out on those state and community trails. And so trails has become a really, really big topic. Next, I would say that state horse councils exist to help provide context to arguments and cases for legal defense and adverse legislation or regulation that's out there. Maybe when we get to the point in the program where we open the mic, Lonnie can give you his story from Florida about how they used the National Economic Impact Study that we conducted to help make their case for some roadways that were going to cut through Ocala and around Wellington and impact the equestrian community. So they use this data a lot there. And last, I would say here that this really, the state horse councils really help us develop and expand on a lot of things that have unintended consequences. People have really good intentions, but sometimes they develop legislation or regulatory issues that they think does not have any impact on us. But when you look more closely, you find that there are some downstream impacts. I am going to remind everybody that if you could please make sure you're on mute so we don't have any background noise, that would be awesome. Okay, so I'm going to close with this and then I'm going to ask Justine to say a few words. But I often tell people that they frequently don't realize how important state horse councils are until there's a piece of legislation or a regulation that turns their life and their livelihood upside down. It could affect your property value. It could affect your ability to enjoy your horses or your equestrian lifestyle. So I would really encourage you to think very hard about the ability of a state horse council to influence a lot of things that are important to you. So Justine, say a few words to us.
Absolutely. Thanks Julie. That is, everything you said is absolutely true. And I would like to emphasize that industry representation is a safeguard to maintain and promote horse ownership and general horse business activities in your state. And if it's not you, then who is it?
Great, great thought there, Justine. I appreciate that. Okay, so anybody got a question you want to throw out right now before I launch into our next subject, which is what it takes to form a state horse council? Throw it in the chat. Okay, well, off we go then. Okay, so to form a state horse council is just like forming almost any other organization. I like to put it in these terms. You need to think about what your goals and objectives are and what role you want to play. Some of our state horse councils are more involved with legislative and regulatory things than others. Some like to put on horse expos. Some like to offer trail rides. So there are a lot of different roles that you can play as a state horse council. And you need to think about outlining what your governance structure looks like. That means write a business plan and identify what sources of revenue you're going to take a look at. A draft bylaws, so you have an idea of how decisions are going to be made and what are some of the things you're going to do. Think a little bit about what kind of leadership capacity you need and how many volunteers you might need to help guide what you're trying to accomplish. And obviously, you need to incorporate in your state and apply for a 501(c)(3) or maybe a 501(c)(6) status depending on what you want your role to be. And then you need to begin to identify target audiences and think about your communication strategy, websites, newsletters, and those kinds of things. So you reach the audience that you're trying to reach. And I'm going to hold it up so you can see this. I'm happy to provide, anybody who is interested, a one-pager called "How to Form a State Horse Council" goes through all the things that I just talked about and it's almost like a checklist. So you make sure you've got all your bases covered there and you're in good standing in all aspects of operating as an organization. Justine, you want to add anything to my list so far?
I would say that those resources can also be found on the CoalitionOfStateHorseCouncil.org website as well. And that way, it's kind of a go-to location for general communication and also a contact point within the organization of state horse councils.
Great. Thanks. I appreciate that. Okay, so now you have thought a little bit about what you want to be when you grow up. You've put together your business plan. You've thought a little bit about it. Now comes the tough part. So I've got a couple of new state horse councils that have recently formed. One is in Missouri right now. I don't know if I have anybody out there from Missouri. But one of the challenges they really struggle with is that they knew what they wanted to do. They knew how they wanted to go about it. But getting people to step up into leadership roles was a bit challenging. So we've got a couple of documents we can share with you about that, about ways to engage people and how to take some of the responsibilities and make them bite-sized so that you can have people that have some time and are willing to get involved to come forward and fill those voids that you might have in some of your leadership capacity. So happy to talk some more about that. But in addition to that, I have another document that I'm happy to send all you guys. It's called "How to Sustain or Grow Your State Horse Council." And there are 100 ideas here to help you figure out how to grow your membership, how to ensure that you have adequate revenue streams, different types of events you can put on, different kinds of information packets you can put together. Just lots and lots and lots of ideas that are out there. And so we're going to hear from three states that have very successful horse councils and let them tell us a little bit of their story. So with that, I'm going to let Justine do some introductions. And I'm going to remind you guys again, please put yourself on mute if you can. We've got some background noise and it may be someone who's on the phone that's got a little bit of a clicking noise to it. So if you do that for us, we greatly appreciate it. So Justine?
Thanks Julie. I'll start out by saying the Coalition is really a unity of the state horse councils, but we are not at all uniform. Every state operates just slightly differently in whether it's their entity structure or how they've organized their focal points of activities. And so I'm excited today to bring Kim Egan from Maryland. We'll have Paula Bryney from Illinois and Sue Gray from North Carolina to share with us a little bit about their entity structure, their funding mechanisms, and just a little bit about their board. I'm excited to see that we've got somebody from Washington State on here and Wyoming. Those are two states that used to have a horse council that no longer do and we'd love to support you if you are interested in redeveloping a horse council. Excited to hear that there's someone from Hawaii because I was looking at that, wondering if there was an opportunity there. And Florida, of course, I know that there's been a, there is a great need for representation there. I know there is a Texas horse council and I look forward to hopefully getting more acquainted with them sometime too. Because we all learn from each other. Peer support is the main thing with the Coalition. And with that, I will turn it over to Kim to start us out sharing a little bit about Maryland. Hi Kim.
Hi. That's not fair making me go first. My name is Kim Egan. I'm one of the co-presidents of the Maryland Horse Council. And we're a relatively complicated organization, I would say. We've been in existence since 1986, so we've been doing this for a while. And the horse industry in Maryland is something else. We have over 30 disciplines represented. We have over 40 different breeds. And we have more horses per square mile than any other state and we're not that big a state. And we are home to like, I shouldn't, for at least premier international competition venues. So we have a lot going on. And our work ranges from, we do a lot with trails and greenways. We have a monthly town hall for the trails and greenways community. We have programs, this is all in addition to straight lobbying, which I'll talk about in a minute. We have a trade magazine that we purchased oh, four years ago now called The Equiary, which we use as a newsletter-ish, but really it's how we get out what all the horse council is doing to the state of Maryland. We sell ads for horse industries and horse businesses. We give, you know, we provide news. We do profiles on interesting people in the community. And all of our committees have a committee report when they have something to report in that magazine too. And that just amplifies our other internet reach and everything else. So that is, and that has full-time staff and that's like a real operation. On the lobbying side, Maryland is a, Maryland is full of lawyers. So nobody's afraid of lobbying here. And our legislature only is in session for 90 days. So we have this very compact, extremely busy session. And we probably monitor at least 30 or 40 bills each session. And we usually have at least one bill that we have gotten sponsors for proactively. And I have, we don't use paid lobbyists and I have to say, we are really successful. I'm not exactly sure why. But just last session, for example, we sponsored and got passed first time out a bill that requires people who lease land from the state that's pertinent to a trail system, lease it to farm, that they have to leave a border around their crops so that everybody can still get to the trails because that was becoming a highly annoying problem. We also do a lot of work on state tax issues. There was an issue recently about, it actually came out of the wineries and breweries, but it applied deeply to horse farms about making sure that value-added structures on horse farms, any farm, were taxed as ag, not as commercial thing. So indoor arenas and all that. That was a big issue. Maryland classifies horses as livestock, so everything to do with farms we can get involved in. And Maryland also has a lot of federal employees and veterans. And so we have a team that works to make sure that, for example, the Maryland State Veterans Association's service animal program funding applies to therapy programs for veterans just as much as it does to dogs and whatever else. So kind of you name it, we're involved in it. And I'll just close by saying, state of Maryland has a Maryland Horse Industry Board that's a state agency within the Department of Agriculture and we have a seat on that and we're super involved in that. So the partnership between them and us, I think Maryland horse people are super well represented and the legislature definitely knows we're here.
That is great information and I'm looking forward to a phone call to follow up on the ag exemption, getting equine facilities recognized as ag because we struggle with that here in Kansas. Again, another value of being part of this coalition is that collaborative discussion that can be had. We learn from each other. Kim, thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks for inviting me.
Yes. All right. Sue Gray, North Carolina. Are you there Sue? Joining us by phone?
Hi, hi. There we go. There we go. I think I'm on now. Thanks Justine, Julie, and everyone that's on the call. And thank you, Bailey, for going first. That gives me a better idea of what I want to say as well too. We were formed in 1972, so this is our 50th year anniversary here, which we're currently celebrating in North Carolina. I'm kind of on three-legged stool right now. So we have kind of a three-legged stool that we are, council operates under. That being policy laws, rules, and regulations in our state. That one is our grant program and our third is our educational aspect of what the council does. I always like to say we're the 411-911 for the industry in North Carolina. We are the kind of the group that steps in when there is an issue. We have calls every day from where to ride to we need a law. We need, we have a problem, kind of a deal. We have a 30-member elected board. We have nine members elected from that is our executive committee. We have 60 members on our board because every equine association, our group, can join as an association and by joining the North Carolina Horse Council, they get one seat, a voting seat on our board. So it's a large overall board, but only a nine-member board making the business decisions for the organization. We do employ professional lobbyists. We have passed in my tenure, which is approximately 18 years now, or coming close to that. Relative laws, just way too many that I want to bore you with on this particular conversation. We have been very successful with our paid lobbyists and also with our association with the North Carolina Farm Bureau, which we maintain a close with their policymaking group as well. Last year, we got another clarification on our present use value tax in North Carolina, which is our agricultural tax to make sure that our boarding facilities were also included under that agricultural definition. This next long-term coming up, we're working on adding a seat on the North Carolina Board of Agriculture that is specifically identified as an equine seat because we increasingly are seeing problems with our state ag-held equine facilities and we're lacking representation on that board currently. So that would be our next legislative issue coming out of the horse council. We're also members of our half-grade state trail coalition on the North Carolina Horse Councils on that executive team. We're also employing lobbyists in that group on that side that will assist us as we move through our trail, necessary trail legislation that is companion to the North Carolina Horse Council. And we're seeing a tremendous amount of success in that group, which is a collection of all trail user groups, non-motorized. So it's been a very strong coalition. We've currently lobbied last year. We received $29 million and we've got a $50 million ask coming up in our next legislative session. So that's important. Farm-wise, we have, we are a 501(c)(5), so we can lobby. We can hire lobbyists, but we also have a companion, North Carolina Horse Council Foundation, which is a 501(c)(3). And last year, we established a political action community, a PAC. So we're trying in the process of funding and getting more funding into that PAC. So that's well on the way. We also have multiple revenue streams. We don't rely on a single revenue stream for the horse council. But our primary revenue is from a feed assessment, which in, which four years ago, I believe, or five years ago, we were actually successful in doubling that fee so that the horse council budget actually doubled in that year. So that's just a brief flyover. Thank you for the time. And of course, always welcome, welcome questions or any other comments that people may have. Thanks, Justine.
Thank you Sue. Yeah, that's, North Carolina is kind of a powerhouse. So is Maryland. But I think I'm next. Paula Bryney, Illinois. She might be a little bit closer aligned as far as the way they operate to what Kansas operates. So again, we're just bringing you a diverse cross-section of the different horse councils that operate and how they, how they're funded, how they're structured, et cetera. So Sue, thank you for that wealth of information. Paula, are you available?
Yep, I'm on. Ms. Paula Bryne, hey, how are you all today?
Great. Glad to have you.
Glad to be here. I'm Paula Bryney. I am President of the Horseman's Council of Illinois. We've been an establishment since 1987. A group of people got together and put it together. And the whole premise at that time was equine infectious anemia. And they were one of the first states to pass the legislation to have all the horses tested. And it was eradicated out of Illinois within three years. So we've got a long, a long history of lobbying and legislation in order to continue the lifestyle that we all enjoy called the horse. As, as they mentioned earlier, trails are a big thing in Illinois. I know our trailer sales, they can't keep living compartment trailers in stock because everybody's trail riding and doing their thing. We've also done the equine liability laws and the signs that we sell and, you know, for different organizations and people buy to go that way. We struggled, just like everybody has this last few years with the pandemic. And as many of you know, Illinois is not well-ranked on its financial situation. So they keep jockeying with various money. We also have a check-off program for our equine promotion board. And so we get five cents for every bag of feed that is sold through the feed stores. It generates $60,000 a year and it is a grant program where you can apply for the money for the promotion or update of your various clubs. That was also put together through the horse council. We also have a foundation as well for, you know, equine disasters such as fires and roofs falling in from snowfall and things like that. We still have one of the longest-running horse expos, horse fairs in the country. We have it every year, the first weekend of March. I think we're ahead of you guys in Kansas. Am I right? I believe, I think we're the weekend before you guys. And in our Coliseum and Illinois State Fairgrounds, we were out there for a year, several years. We were in the side building. And now we're back in the Coliseum. This, they're getting ready to start on phase two. And they're, they seem to think they're going to put air conditioning and heating. So I don't know yet if we're going to be able to have a horse fair this coming spring in 2023. We're still negotiating with the Department of Ag. We do work quite closely with the Department of Ag on legislation and emergencies as well as with the Farm Bureau. Our next big push within our organization in lobbying pieces is the Working Animal Protection Act and getting that because we are one of the top-ranked animal rights groups where there, we're highly regulated. Unfortunately, horses under certain aspects are considered companion animals. Other pieces of it were considered livestock. So depending on how it's, how you, how you rate it, depends on whether it's livestock or companion animals. They did have legislation last year where they had thrown the horses in with the cats and the dogs and the children in vehicles. And we had a very strong push on that one. So did the cattle and hog people that particularly the show ones that they, that people could come by and just let your animals out of the trailer. That was a little sporting, but we did manage to get that pushed down and changed around and got horses and various livestock like that excluded. I mean, they were livestock, but the way it was so loosely worded was that they could come up to your horse trailer or livestock trailer and open the door and let your animals out if they felt they were being too hot. So, you know, it is, it's a wild and crazy world at the moment. And it's, you know, here in Illinois, we're working on education all the time of keeping the horses in the front line, even though many years ago we were number three in the country. I think we're still fairly high up in the number of horses within the state. Due to the lack of our racing bill, our racing industry is not very good. But our breeding and our show horses and trail horses, we do have a lot of them. So that's kind of where we're at at the moment. We are starting a new promotion, membership drive with promotion through social media. We did a survey this summer of to what, to see what our members wanted to know, what they didn't know, and trying to cultivate new people and to, you know, the horses and into the horse council. And it was very successful. So we are starting a Facebook promotion, social media promotion to generate more memberships and to get our word out there so that we can continue to educate and promote the horses and our lifestyle that we enjoy. I think that's the extent of my report at this moment. If anybody has any questions, please don't hesitate to contact us. We're on Facebook and we have a website. So if anybody has anything else, that's all I have to have. Thank you for having us on here. And Justine, back to you. Thank you.
Thank you so much Paula. That's a lot of great, a lot of things happening in Illinois for sure. And I think I try to stay up with some of the animal rights activities through the animal- And I, I think I try to stay up with some of the, uh, animal rights activities through the, uh, animal, oh, I think it's called Animal Welfare Newsletter that Cindy Shawn holds, puts out. And there's, there seems to be a lot of Illinois in there, so keep up the great work.
There is. Thank you, thank you.
What you guys do is very important to, to, to maintain the ownership opportunities and all the rights that are going on.
Yeah.
Just a good example.
For those of you that are, that are new to this, you can hear, there's lots of synergy between states. Uh, it's not uncommon for us to hear of a piece of legislation or regulatory issue that's bubbled up in one state that somehow starts to spread across the country and appear in other places. So it's always good to get that information firsthand. You could also, uh, really pick these people's brains if you're part of the coalition. They meet regularly, they talk about these issues, they talk about the strategies they use to help fight some of the issues. And they try to leverage one another to say, this worked for us, this didn't work, how can we help one another? Sometimes it's a collective thing, um, often. Uh, Kim can, can attest to this. Um, there are things that happen and you need to generate a letter-writing campaign. So you contact someone in your state legislature. And if you can partner with Farm Bureau or Backcountry Horsemen of America, or the Coalition can give you lots of, of, uh, of other organizations that are operating in our space. They may not be doing exactly the issue that you are, uh, attacking, but they may have some lobbyists on their staff who have some ideas or have some contacts that can get you into offices or get you in to meet with certain people at the Department of Agriculture or others that would be really helpful to you. So again, to Justine's earlier statement, the real value of being part of the Coalition of State Horse Councils and being a member of the American Horse Council is we can bubble these issues up and make you aware of them and let you be more proactive than having to go on the defense and be reactive because something's already happened and now you're, you're fighting the fight to try to get it turned around. So if you're on the front end, you've got a better chance. Uh, at the American Horse Council, we monitor somewhere between a hundred to a hundred and fifty pieces of legislation. Some of them aren't really going anywhere. They may have one sponsor or two sponsors on them. And, and we don't spend a lot of time on those if we don't see that they've got a lot of legs. Uh, but on the other hand, it does give us a chance to get into an office and better educate that congressional member because they may not understand that something that they intended to do is going to have a consequence on us. Kim gave a, an example, I think, earlier of a situation we found for federal legislation where they were trying to do the right thing by allowing, uh, victims of domestic abuse to have access to their pets. But they wanted to define a pet to be a dog, a cat, a horse, an iguana, a rabbit. And we said, wait, 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 we're livestock. Please don't make horses inside that parentheses as a pet. You can say dogs, cats, rabbits, iguanas, close parentheses, and horses. Just that small little change, but makes a big difference and doesn't, uh, affect our status as a livestock. Um, so those are the kinds of things that are just little nuances that when we get together as a group, we can talk about and strategize on ways to try to help each other solve those things. Justine, you want to add anything to that little story or Kim, Sue, anybody?
That's exactly right. And, and like you said, the synergy, um, when, when there is a, a neighboring state even that needs a little bit of help. Um, and I'll, I'll just bring up Missouri, for example, back before they were really completely formed together. They were having trail issues and we all kind of came together to jump in and, and, uh, speak towards their needs. Um, and those needs that would directly impact even a therapeutic riding stable that was adjacent to the trails. So, um, you know, call your friends to, to come up and, and bat with you. That's what we're here for, so.
Kim, you want to chime in?
Yeah, I would just, something you just said, it's, it's important to remember, especially for states that aren't as lawyer-heavy as we are here around Washington DC, that you've got to really keep a close eye on the legislation that's coming down because it might not appear to you to have anything to do with the horse industry. But if upon closer read, it might have quite a dramatic effect in a collateral way. Um, and your example of where's the comma and what does that mean for how we're classified? That stuff is huge and legislators really don't know that they're making this possible change. And they're totally happy to move the comma. Um, they just need to have it pointed out. And so, uh, it's, uh, it's, it's fun and it's very impactful. It can be really impactful to people's bottom lines and people's livelihoods.
Yeah, uh, uh, definitely. To that point, I'm going to do a little shameless plug. So the American Horse Council puts on a quarterly webinar, uh, and we pick various topics and we take suggestions from you guys. So by all means, let me know if you've got one. The one that really resonated for us for this quarter is next Monday, the twenty-second at one PM Eastern Time. It's on equine liability laws. I have to tell you, that is one of the most confusing topics that are, there is out there. And our favorite expert, Julie Freshman, who wrote this wonderful book, is our guest speaker. And she's going to come in and talk about, if you don't have this book, buy it, it's a great book. But, um, she's going to come in and talk about why equine liability laws vary from state to state. Why just putting up that sign that says equine liability law inherent risk is not enough to cover. And your members need to know these things because they think they bought the sign that your state sells and they just put that up over here on the wall in the tack room and all is well. No. If you, it, you're, you all know, you heard Kim say, we live in a litigious society. So if somebody comes out and something happens unexpectedly, saying, I've got that sign, it's just not enough. She's also going to talk about some of the challenges more recently with waivers. Some people think, I'll put up the sign and then I'll have all of my, uh, my lesson students and my boarders or whatever, sign this, this liability waiver. That's not carrying a lot of water anymore either. So she's going to talk a little bit about that. And our second guests on the call are some folks from Jarvis Insurance. They're going to talk about liability coverage and what are the questions you need to answer to make sure that you have got adequate coverage. So there's some great stuff coming up and that's a topic that came from this group, equine liability laws, really confusing topic. And Julie, this Julie, not me, is going to tell you that if you have folks that go out to Amazon and they think they're going to buy an equine liability sign off of Amazon because it's inexpensive, they're not, they're, they're not worth, Kim's shaking her head, they're not worth the, the plastic they're, they're printed on. Uh, each state has a very specific language for equine liability laws, so you've got to get the right sign. So tune in next Monday if you want to hear all about that. But again, my whole point of that is to illustrate that these are subjects that are near and dear to you and they're subjects that you can broadcast to your members. So that's the part that's next on the agenda. How do you leverage the American Horse Council? How do you leverage the Coalition of State Horse Councils? And Justine can tell you, go out on the Coalition of State Horse Council website. You will find templates and sample documents. So you can see bylaws, you can see all types of, uh, different, uh, illustrations of different things that they've done. You can communicate with one another and you can, um, hear success stories and you can hear some of the pitfalls, things that you might want to avoid, kind of thing. Uh, you can get in touch with subject matter experts, uh, that'll get you up to speed or point you to somebody else that, where you might need some information from. And we actually have a pretty good, for lack of a better word, stable of consultants who are happy to give you some free advice to help you with some of these things. Say your, um, state horse council wants to implement a new membership database. I got a great gal, she's looked at all of them, she can look at what your needs are, she can come back and say, okay, for what you're trying to do, you might choose this database over this database. She can help you figure out what's the right direction to go with that. So there's lots of different resources out there that, that we can point you to. But from the American Horse Council's website, I want to encourage you to go out there. We can help you find grant funding sources. There's lots of different opportunities out there like that. We can talk to you a little bit about grant fund writing. Uh, you can, obviously, we let you poach all of our information. You can take our newsletter, take any of those articles that are there, go out, spread those around, make sure people are well-informed, hear about all these issues. We can talk to you about advertising and promotional tools and things that are available out there. Uh, follow us on social media. Uh, that's true for any of the state horse councils or the American Horse Council. Uh, right now, the American Horse Council is doing a series of surveys. So every Monday on social media, we're posting a question and we're asking anybody, members and non-members, what's your opinion on this subject? Last week, the question was, what do you think is our top legislative issue? You guys know what the answer was, trails, trails, trails. Um, so we've heard a lot about that. Um, and, uh, this week, we are asking the question, what do you think is the one occupation in the equine industry that needs to be professionalized? More about that when the survey results are in. But we're, we're, we're out there, we're sort of being thought-provoking. We're asking those questions, those, some of them maybe not so popular, but we're trying to get a better bead on what's people's, uh, what's on top of people's minds. Uh, and last, the one thing that I wanted to make sure you know is if you're a member of the American Horse Council and the Coalition of State Horse Councils, we have discount partners and you can offer those to your members. Uh, the most popular discount partner we have is of course, John Deere. Everybody wants a discount on their tractor. And so, uh, we've got lots of things like that. You'll see in this week's newsletter, um, Office Depot has got a new offer that we're passing on to all of you for discounts on business products. Uh, so if you're a state horse council and you have a copy or and you have crappy paper or whatever the things are, you can get some discounts through Office Depot's program. So look at that when you see our newsletter this week. Uh, so lots of different things like that. We are constantly evaluating new discount partners or new programs that we can, uh, provide to you. So lots of different ways that you can go about doing some of those kinds of things. Uh, I know, uh, Red Brand Fencing, I believe, is one of the ones that's out there, Sherwood Wing Paints out there. Uh, just so, a lot of, of, of different opportunities. Justine, you want to add anything to my laundry list right there?
Uh, it's a pretty good laundry list. I'll, I'll just, uh, put it a plug again for our website. The website, coalitionofstatehorsecouncil.org is relatively new. It's still being further developed. But what we hope to, um, make of it is, is a place where you can, uh, get updates or post updates through the blog. Tell us what's happening in your state, let's share that news. And it's, uh, the Coalition actually meets on a quarterly basis via Zoom, um, so twice a year via Zoom. And then of course, there's two in-person meetings. Um, this year it was, uh, it'll be one this fall. We've got the upcoming fall Coalition of State Horse Council's meeting in Ohio. Thank you, Ohio, for hosting that. And the dates of that are October twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-three. Would love to have you. And even if you're not a current state horse council and you would like to just get familiar, get acquainted with us, um, give us a call, uh, come to the meeting, uh, if you're not far away. We, we'd love to engage with you. This is how we start, you know, helping you to be proactive in your state is just by getting acquainted with everybody uh, that's part of a, a state horse council, a great communication hub there. So, um, there's my plug for the new website.
Great. Okay, so I'm going to do one quick thing since we're down to our last few minutes of this, uh, of this town hall. And I'm going to see if I can easily do this. Cliff Williamson, are you out there? If so, show yourself, Cliff Williamson. He's my Director of Health and Regulatory Affairs. He's that big tall guy with the beard, there he is, right there. So if you have a question, whether it's federal or state, sometimes even local, Cliff is the go-to guy when it comes to anything that's regulatory or health-related. So he can talk to you about all kinds of subjects that are related to that. The ones that he's so fond of talking about right now are probably CAFO, Consolidated Animal Feed Operations. He's been working on pyrethons, which are chemicals that are used in our fly sprays. He's been working on rodenticides. What else, Cliff's on your laundry list right now?
All, all the regular things, horse disease-wise, uh, import-export, interstate transportation. Uh, I, I still have some conversations about drone usage and, uh, land rights access. So yeah, there's laundry lists of things.
So feel free to reach out to Cliff, he's, he's the easy guy to find. And introducing today for the first time, I want you to meet Bridget Shea. Bridget, there she is. There's Bridget, I Bridget. Bridget is our new government affairs liaison. She's going to be doing all things legislative-wise. Bear with her, she's getting up to speed, but she is a horse person herself. So she's, she knows the lingo and the language a little bit, and so we're excited about having her join us. I think somewhere out there, I have, um, Emily Sterns, where are you, Emily? There she is. Emily Sterns is our resident researcher, I like to call her. She's the program manager for the Equine Welfare Data Collective. This is a research project we've been doing the last four years, Emily?
Four years, yeah, twenty-eighteen.
Uh, where we survey all the rescues and sanctuaries across the country to understand capacity, understand how many horses they have in their care, how they, how those horses come to them, uh, how long their length of stay is. So there's some great, great data out there. I encourage you states to take a look at that. So you get a handle on what's going on in your state as far as the number of horses at risk or in need of adoption and ways that we can build programming. Marilyn's done a great job around that, Kim. Programming around helping horses that are at risk or, or in need. So we really appreciate some of the work that's being done out there. Ashley Harkins has already un, unshone her face. Most of you know Ashley, she's our program manager for the United Horse Coalition. So as I close up talking about resources available to you and your members, let's not forget that the United Horse Coalition is here to provide resources to horse owners who find themselves in difficult circumstances. So Ashley, talk a minute about the resource database.
Absolutely, yeah. So, excuse me, on our website, we actually have this really neat tool. It's a, uh, searchable database, uh, on the site. And it's, it ha, it holds basically a, a contact list of over, uh, twelve-hundred rescues and sanctuaries nationwide that we've identified. Um, so if an owner needs help with, with placement for their horse and they can't keep them any longer, um, there's a, there's a safe, safe landing for them there. Um, we also have a database inside that searchable database of, uh, safety net programs. So these are things like fat assistance programs, castration assistance, um, hay and feed banks, anything that can help assist an owner in need. Um, the, these programs that we've identified nationwide, they can go and search by whatever state that they reside in. And we will populate the results, um, with whatever programs we've identified that are available to them. Um, on our site, we also have, uh, different types of educational materials for current and prospective horse owners. So, um, uh, one of the, the great ones we have right now, there is estate planning. Um, so certainly as horse councils, you know, we encourage you to, uh, avail yourselves of those, those excellent resources and, uh, let horse owners know that they, they exist and, and utilize them. They're there and they're free. Um, and the last thing I'm just going to plug real quick is we're actually running a, um, a microchip giveaway on the UHC site. Uh, this is open to both horse owners and, uh, horse rescues as well. And, um, horse owners can get up to two chips, rescues can get up to five. All they need to do is just go on our, on the UHC site, um, do a little bit of reading about microchips and why they're so important. Uh, and sign the form, sign up on the form and we will send them chips.
Yeah, thanks, Ashley. So, um, I also would like to call your attention to our horse industry directory. It's up on the AHC website. The reason I point that out is someone said in one of their comments, you know, my day starts off with somebody who calls me and says, I have a child with special needs and I'm looking for an equine services facility. Aha, go to this page, look in the horse industry directory. There's a, there's a listing of all of the equine assisted services centers across the country in there that are PATH certified. So you, you're confident that you're getting a good quality, uh, facility there. So we send people there. I have somebody who calls me up and says, hey, I just discovered that I need some help with euthanasia or I need to make some decisions about this. What are some ways that I could do that? Okay, I've got a great source for you. I send them to Ashley. So we're always happy to direct people to different resources to help them find what they're looking for. Sometimes it may not be the answer they wanted. You guys have probably been there and done that. But we do our best to try to help them figure out, you know, all the information that they, that they, uh, need to know in order to make an informed decision. So with that, I will pause and say, thanks again for joining us. Tell us, open, unmute yourself and let us know if you have a question. Anybody?
Uh, I was just curious on the SAFE and PATH stack. Y'all had mentioned some of the legislation that y'all are watching right now. Uh, we've just had HISA and, and all of that enacted, which is kind of a hornet's nest that's been kicked. And then the SAFE and PASD Act, uh, to my mind, are kind of the most imminent national legislation, uh, coming on. I've, I've read both of them and while I would support the spirit of the, the PASD Act, um, to me, there's a lot of language in there that's ultimately going to be damaging to the industry as a whole, where they divert from talking about gated horses and they just use any horse and so forth. Uh, for instance, there's language in there that says that, uh, they changed the definition of soaring. I'm going to paraphrase here, but it basically is any activity that can reasonably be, uh, expected to cause pain to a horse, uh, which to my mind would include, uh, abscess test from a barrier, a veterinarian giving a shot. And a lot of these open-door sorts of things, uh, in the legislation that I think ultimately are going to be harmful. So where, where, where are y'all on that? Or does it look like that's killed and not a concern or, or what? Because I was under the impression that both the, the SAFE and PASD Acts are, are likely going to pass.
So Cliff, I'd invite you to unmute yourself and speak to his question.
Yeah, so the PASD Act explicitly applies to the three breeds that are mentioned in the opening paragraph and all of subsequent definitions. And all of subsequent definitions specifically apply to those three breeds listed. Um, so I, I don't know specifically which line you're talking about that applies to any horse. But it would only apply to the three breeds in the definition clause in the beginning of the paragraph, or beginning of the document. Um, that because, and that is done specifically, the only way that the American Horse Council. And our members could support it was if it was held within the confines of the three breeds that are still pursuing these activities. Proven to be pursuing these activities. Um, within the health space, within the non-walking horse space. You know, you talk about rodeo, you talk about racing, you talk about any of these other things that'd be dramatically impacted if any of this language. Could be construed to apply to them. Um, unfortunately soaring continues to persist. That's not a debate. It's a fact. It's, uh, curtailed dramatically. I do appreciate that. But the USDA continues to find, uh. People engaged in activities that are injuring animals. And then unfortunately, we have not seen an internal action taken to run them out entirely. Uh, in fact, individuals who have been convicted of felonies have been brought back into this sport. Um, so that's, that's, that, that's very service level. I, I'm happy to have this conversation, uh, privately. Uh, I don't, just don't want to take all the time. That said. Uh, I, I would like everybody at all state horse councils to understand that the horse, the American Horse Council operates. To the benefit of the entire industry. And we, we won't take action without consensus of all of our organizational members. Um, and that represents a lot of, all of the disciplines and all the breeds. Uh, in the Safe Act case, that's the example that we use. Our industry has not come to a consensus on how the American Horse Council should act in regards to slaughter. And so because of that, the American Horse Council doesn't take a position on that. Uh, we don't advocate for either side of that debate. We do provide resources to anybody that has questions about slaughtering the United States. The export of horses for slaughter to other countries or the passage of the Safe Act in general, but we don't take a position. Um, and though that is something that I would strongly encourage all horse councils to take into account. A, as you're, uh, trying to broaden your organizations at the state level is, um, if you can find, if you can. Insist on consensus before taking action, uh, you're much less likely to suffer the schisms that we've seen. And some horse councils in some states. Uh, Past Act is a perfect example of that.
I've got another question appears. I want to jump over here. Scott, you, you've got your hand up.
Hi, thank you. Uh, two points, both of them on trail access. Our, our state legislature has done some, uh, recent legislation that's very anti-equestrian. What they've done, uh, it's rather nineteen eighty-four, but they've redefined. As being non-motorized.
Yeah, we've been working on that issue.
Okay, okay. Um, the other, that's at the state level. And at the county level where I am, the county is openly hostile towards horses and trying to drive us. Off of, uh, a lot of the county parks owned, uh, trail structures by turning. Those areas into downhill, high-speed mountain bike things. I have a strong hunch that. Uh, the lobbyists that are pushing this are probably operating at a national, uh, in a national scope. But we're definitely getting hit with it here in Washington. And my, my question is, uh, I don't want to rat hole on solutions because we don't have the five hours it would take to do that. But I was wondering if you have an organization at the national level. That would assist us at the state level, because the other horse organizations in the state have just. Thrown up their, essentially thrown up their hands because they're being overwhelmed by organizations that are orders of magnitude larger than them.
So happy to talk to you a little offline Scott, but yes, we've been working on the e-bike issue, um, specifically partnering with. Uh, Backcountry Horsemen of American and Equine Land Conservation Resource out of Lexington. Um, and I, I will say that we have created, for those of you that aren't aware, uh, right now we have two, what we call incident report, uh, options. So if someone who is an equestrian has an encounter with an e-bike, you can fill out an incident report. And that's really helpful for us because it gives us some data to go back, to have some conversations with the park service and the forest service and, and others about that. Um, we have been trying really hard to, uh, collaborate, if you will, I guess is the right word with. A, a organism, a national organization called People for Bikes. Um, they have been very much promoting e-bikes and we have been talking to them about the importance. Of, of being good trail users and being good stewards for trails and sharing trails, uh, trail etiquette and that kind of thing. So we've got some resources, Scott, we can, we can point you towards that might be able to be helpful for that. Good question. Good question. Anybody else question out there? My clock says we got three minutes, so I'm going to take one more question. Um, Justine, make yourself a note. I promised Michelle, um, that we are going to loop back with her to talk to her offline. About how we can help her get her horse council back reinvigorated. Um, so we'll make a plan to, to get ourselves together on that. Um, I guess I'll close by saying any of you, if, if you walk away from this. Uh, and you want some more information, reach out to me or Justine and we'll be happy to share, uh, what we have with you and have some conversations with you. And I'm sure Justine would be happy to add you to her, uh, email distribution list. So if you want to attend a Coalition of State Horse Councils and maybe it's just the first meeting and sort of get a taste for what they talk about. And some of the things they do, you could be part of that kind of conversation and sort of hear what's going on in, in other places. Uh, so with that, I will thank you so much for your time this afternoon. Uh, the best way to reach, uh, us, uh, Justine, give them your email address.
Well, you can go to info@coalitionofstatehorsecouncils.org. Or my personal email is director@kansashorsecouncil.com.
Great. Thanks. And you can always contact us here at the American Horse Council. The easy way is info@horsecouncil.org. Uh, but each of us here at the council, uh, our email addresses are our first initial, last name. So jaybroadway@horsecouncil.org. You can get the same with C Williamson and so on. So feel free to drop us a note, uh, if there's something that, that we can address or we can, uh, help you, uh, research or, or, uh, look into. Um, I'm really excited, Justine. I'll just say this because I have a minute to do it. Uh, we had, recently had an intern that was with us for the last month. Uh, that intern was asked by our Recreation Trails and Land Use Committee to put together a National Equestrian Trails Directory. And he's wrapping up that project and I'm really excited about it. It has hot links to lots of resources. Whether those, those be trails or they be, um, layover areas or, um, other type of stabling options that you might have. It's got some video clips in there about trail etiquette and a lot of good, uh, details there. Um, so lots and lots of great stuff, uh, that's coming out of that trail directory. So look for that. We hope to have it ready. And available sometime in the next few weeks. We're putting the, the finishing touches on it yet. So, uh, thank you again for your time this afternoon and, uh, we wish you, uh, happy national nonprofit day. Bye.